Thank you so much for joining the instructional committee for the Concord School Board. I am not Brenda Hastings, though I wish I could be sometimes. She's pretty rad. But she's usually the chair of this committee. She's asked me to stay in her place because she is out of state today. Also joining us on the committee is Jess Campbell. Sarah Sadowski will probably be joining us a little bit later. And of course Barb Higgins always joins us on the instructional committee because like she says, it's where the heart of the work is. Quick agenda, we're going to start with the advisory and restorative practices/circle up from Principal Richard and the RMS team. Very excited to hear from you guys. And after that, we'll have a quick update on the ad hoc special education subcommittee. So with that, Jay, I hand it to you and your team.
Yeah, good evening. And it's good to see everybody. Again, I'm Jay Richard. I'm here with Sean Wyon, Assistant Principal, Jess Bozeman, grade six, who's helped lead these efforts this year. Jess also is a special education teacher at the middle school. Amy Golden, who is also the distinguished educator from last year, which I love to share. And Miles Pignotelli with his mom here as well. And we're going to talk about what we're doing in advisory for circles. So I'm going to turn it right over to Jess. Jess, welcome.
Thank you. All right, so we're using circles to build community at RMS. I'm going to walk you through just like a quick overview of restorative practices and how they look at RMS, and then we'll talk about circles. So what are restorative practices? So it's an approach to building and sustaining positive relationships. It gets its roots in indigenous and community traditions of collective accountability and healing with an emphasis on connection before correction, and it prioritizes repair over punishment. So the foundation of restorative practices is relationships. So as we know, students thrive when they feel respected, valued, and connected to people within their school communities. And the focus is on accountability through repair. So understanding the impact of something that has happened and your actions, and then taking responsibility and making amends. Highlight is on inclusion and voice. So students, staff, and families share in decisions and problem solving. Common practices in restorative practices is circles, which we're using heavily. Structured dialogue, and that looks like the structured dialogue to build community and address harms. Effective statements and questions, which is naming feelings and impacts, and we'll look at those in a sec. And those help our students and our staff and families build empathy. And restorative conferences, which is really more seen on the administrative front, which looks more heavily into if something has occurred, looking at what has happened, the impact, and then the step forwards so that students can be welcomed back into the community. It's proactive at Runlet. We're using the circles as a proactive way to build community, and we're doing that through regular circle use throughout the week, heading towards a daily basis, and then again, more common rituals that strengthen trust. So just a quick overlook at the educational impact restorative practices can have. It can reduce suspensions and explosions. It improves school climate and relationships. It enhances the engagement of students and builds their empathy. And really important, conflict resolution skills, which is a lifelong skill. So restorative practices also strengthen belonging and accountability because we have stronger connections through our school community because of this. So our approach at RMS is we're integrating our restorative practices throughout the day. So specifically, that's looking like circles embedded into advisory time for us, which occurs between two and three times a week, depending on what week we're having with Blue and Duke block scheduling. And so we also are encouraging faculty to use essential and effective questions. About a third of the staff right now has been trained in those. Two thirds of the staff in circle use. So the essential and effective questions proactively model restorative language and engage listening. And these help us build trusting relationships every day throughout our school day. And we're working towards faculty feeling comfortable enough using these questions to also then use them in a responsive format if something has happened responding to that. And again, it helps us teach accountability. And what does it mean when you have your intention is this, but your impact was actually this? And then empathy in a way forward. So the responsive questions look like this. And this is specifically if something has occurred. What happened? What were you thinking at the time? What have you thought about since? Who has been affected? In what way could they have been affected? What do you think you need to do to make things right? And so you're using these questions when you're talking with someone who has, their behavior has directly caused the situation. And then just with a slight twist, these are the questions that we would ask to those who have been impacted. So what did you think when you realized what had happened? What impact has this had on you and others? What has been the hardest thing for you? And what do you feel needs to happen to make things right? So there is, there is a specific purpose behind the sequence and the order. And each question promotes deeper reflection into what happened and owning your responsibility. And each question works on building empathy, right? And thinking about the perspective of others and how it impacted them. And then it ends with, my favorite, ends with agency. Like putting it out there to the students, like, take ownership. What do you think we could use as a way forward? What needs to happen? And the proactive format, which is what we're using more on a daily basis as teachers, is a little twist. And so it's positive. What's going well for you this week? Has anyone helped you recently and how? And what's something kind that you've done lately? And so what that looks like for us is that at least once a week, we're using those specific questions in a circle. We do other circles in advisory that have different questions. And sometimes we weave in our Wayfair advisory lessons into our circles. Thank you, Wayfinder. Wayfair is a great place to get furniture.
Or a hotel stay.
Wayfinder. But once a week, we're doing these questions as a check-in. So we're going to put you all on the spot, if it's okay. We'd like to do a quick circle with you.
Can we do high-low buffalo?
Miles is here. And Miles is going to help Mrs. Golden and I within the circle. And if you guys are willing, those of you who are able to come up, I think maybe this space would be best. Is that okay? Because it's easier to circle up here.
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah, and I think Josh can see us from those angles, too.
Okay, great.
So spoiler alert, I've worked closely with Miles for several summers now.
Oh, excellent.
We go way back.
Awesome.
Track camp.
Oh, nice. Well, we, we asked four students to, I'm not sure how long one is right now, but that's okay.
Mondays are so hard.
I know. Two couldn't make it. I'm not sure. Maybe, I hope they're not stuck upstairs, so.
So Miles, we're going to go over with them. Etiquette really tricky.
Yeah, do mine or your? I sent them a message and said, "Hey."
So for those of you that have never participated in a circle, you have one circle keeper. Actually, it's going to be Mrs. Golden then.
Oh, goodness, start me off.
And they start off, Mrs. Golden will start off asking the questions. She has the talking piece. When the talking piece is in your hand, you get to speak. But if you don't have it, you're just attentively listening. And Miles, what do we always tell your fellow students about the talking piece? You pass it not...
Yeah.
We use like a squishy ball, so we're not, not a mock.
Yeah.
Right? We get really big in our class.
If you're stuck, we do have the more intensive questions up on the screens. But we're starting, we always start with a fun, easy question. And so today's fun, easy question is, are you more of a vanilla or a chocolate person? So go ahead.
Chocolate.
Chocolate.
Vanilla.
Chocolate?
Absolutely chocolate.
Yeah, chocolate.
Vanilla.
Vanilla. Chocolate.
Dark chocolate.
Oh.
Chocolate.
Dark chocolate.
Okay.
We just dumped her in. So next question is, what's going well for you this week? Oof, it was a rough day for me today, so I'm going to be positive here. What's going well for you this week? Well, all the kids did a really nice job on their evacuation practice today, so I was really happy to have that back today. We talked about last week. That's all.
Yeah, that's, that's fair.
I think it's just good that it wasn't going very bad.
Good job. It was a good bonus. No one's sick. Being here with you. I have not had too much sugar yet today. That's legit.
It is legit.
That's very hard. I'm going to use that one, too. I only had one sweet treat today. That's going really well.
It was.
My boys play hockey on Sunday. They had a really good time in hockey. So that was great for me, too.
My foot's no problem?
Yay!
I celebrated my birthday.
Happy birthday!
My daughter is home tonight from UNH, since she has to go to her office. And she just finished rugby season, so we can settle down for a few weeks. Until spring 7th.
We had two veteran guest speakers in our Veterans Day assembly today.
It was really nice to see an RMS alum eating a leesin who spoke to us today.
Has anyone helped you recently? How? Yeah, my brother actually has stepped up and helped a little bit with our dad, who's had some health issues. So he took a little bit off my plate last week, so that was really nice.
My friend Jack helped me with how.
I have this older brother, and Miles made nope last night. I talked for dinner.
Oh.
Yucky. I just read.
Very good. It's always good to get a hint. So actually, this, we were just, I had a big meeting today about like bringing different departments together and how we need to work better as partners. So I'm going to go home and think more about restorative practices and maybe reach out to you. So there you go. What's the question again? Has anyone helped me? My husband is helping me right now by feeding my children, so I can be here.
I have a cool husband.
Every day, I kind of people fabulous sitting around me that are helping me.
My daughter bought me three plastic containers of gum. As you all know, I chew all the time because my mouth hurts. So I have copious amounts of gum right now.
Yes, I'll steal some later.
Yeah, none problem.
My colleague helped me today with some thinking. We ate her some.
One of our counselors today took on a few couple tasks for me because we had a number of assemblies and we needed to cover some extra lunches that I normally wouldn't have. So those things had to happen, so.
My dad drove down from Maine to help me out to meet a appliance service tech.
My kids helped me get them and myself out there every morning to school around time.
What's something kind you have done lately? So this was actually really good for our students to do because it made them stop and think. And we actually, is this okay to talk? So we, we said, okay, we're going to be doing, you know, the same questions. So it gives between now and next week, we said this last week. Like, think about, think about something, what you might, what you could do to help somebody or, you know, something kind, and then be able to share that out. But we also said, don't make it out. You know, like, we want it to be authentic.
Authentic.
Authentic. So I, we have some elderly neighbors who struggle with technology. So I would, I go over there about once a week, and I help them with their computer.
I hope my teammates and school get better.
I helped my kids have a sleepover on Saturday.
I babysat a friend's cat and dog this weekend. I helped a colleague in, with an interview and, for a really important interview. They have this. That's really nice. I made a colleague some meals that's having some health issues this weekend.
I had a phone call with a colleague today. I could tell she was having a difficult day. So I went and had lunch and just listened.
I have a neighbor who has cancer, so I do his laundry.
I helped my dad with the, some things.
Today at seventh grade recess, I was covering and was able to have, I think, a successful one-on-one helping someone navigate a pattern I'm aware of that she gets caught in. So I hope it was successful today.
I let my wife sleep in all weekend and took over some household morning duties.
I make friends and lunch every day.
That is so sweet.
I don't.
And we're going to end with another kind of later one. Cat or dog? Or neither? Or both? I was always a cat person until I got my baby, so now I'm a dog person. Good choice.
Dog.
Under the same roof.
I'd have to say both, in case my friend is listening who's not a dog.
All the cats, all of them. I love the cats.
I'm a dog person all the way. Many dogs.
Dogs all the way. Many dogs.
Yeah. Hachoo! Hachoo!
Neither?
Neither. But if I had to come back as one, I'd be a dog.
Cat.
Dogs all the way. Dogs.
Dogs. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. It was really lovely. I appreciate it. I could be line, too. Thank you, Miles.
Yeah, great job, Miles. Thank you for both of you showing up and doing that.
Sorry, we're, we're.
Yeah, because I asked him to get.
Thank you so much. Yes, yes, very much.
Miles, thank you.
Bye, Miles. I'm going to get laid off tomorrow.
So that was just an over, a little quick look at what it looks like in advisory. Miles is the best.
I love him.
Yeah. That was really nice of him to show up outside of school.
Those Pignotellis are track camp veterans, years and years.
He's awesome.
And he's one of our more quiet students, but every day, we never have to. I have a little bit of a hearing loss. And I'm, I'm like, what was that? And he is on it sharp and loud.
In, in a big group at track camp, he's the kid. You wouldn't think it, but he's the one that, I'll turn around and he's picked something up or organized something or brought someone back. Like, he's just that invisible. Yeah, he gets the big picture like Gershon.
So that's how we use them proactively in advisory. And why proactive matters? It is helping teachers every day. It's used more by teachers than administrators, but it is also teaching our students the structure of restorative practices, but in low-stakes moments and contexts so that we have the fluency and automaticity before the stressful moments when we're responding with similar questions if something has occurred. So we're using mid-advisory. We're working towards using them in classes. We'll kind of show you what that looks like in a second. And then hallway conversations. And the goal is that we will one day be walking down the halls of Runlet, and we will hear kids asking each other the questions in response to a situation. And so we're introducing them intentionally. So again, they'll feel familiar and approachable, and it's not something new in a moment where they're already heightened. And our aim is for everybody on the staff to be using them every day. And as I said, for kids to then turn, in turn, use them to process. Building stronger community. So all of these practices give us stronger relationships when we're using them consistently, and we're creating caring dialogue by doing that. So it goes from this person cares because they're listening to me attentively using these questions, they're asking about my life, to that can quickly become, I can go to this person because I know they want to talk to me and they hear me, and I, this is who I can go to when it's hard. And then we're just remodeling every day when we're using them. We're modeling that this is what caring looks like. This is what building connections look like. And this is what it looks like when, when something has happened and we are owning our responsibility. So real quick, we can also use these questions in this format in curriculum. We, on our last professional day, started to talk about this in some professional developments. And it's, Fern was just saying she's seen it done in math and science. I feel less confident when I'm instructing people how to do that, but I'm thinking Amy can help with that. But they work really well with LA and history, thinking about when you look at an event, what happened? What do you think the people who were part of this event were thinking and feeling? Who was impacted by this and how? And what did they do to make things right? Or what could they have done? Or how was it repaired? And then just an example of how we're using it in sixth grade. Right now, we're in, in LA, we're doing a friendship novel unit. And one of the books, in a book group, is Wild River. And it's, there's been a flood while a group of middle schoolers and their guides were whitewater rafting, and the adults are obliterated at the very beginning. And so the kids are surviving in the wilds, and it's high stakes. And so the characters, like, what are they thinking and feeling? Every chapter is something, is something they have to overcome. And so who's been impacted and how? What could they have done or what could they do? And what did they do to make things right? And there's conflict almost every chapter. So it's been a really great way for students to have deeper process and deeper connection to the story. All right, questions for us?
I want to come.
Yeah.
Years and years and years ago, I did a sabbatical, and I created a health curriculum for elementary schools, which is in several big bins in my garage. But the curriculum, because we were talking about young kids, was you can't really do spirit, like soul and religious kind of stuff. So it was social health, physical health, and emotional health. So how are you as a friend? How are you feeling inside? And do you eat well and take care of your body? And so many of these activities were designed for creating self-assessment and health for, for young kids. How, when you're five, how do you know what your feelings mean or even what they are? So it's just a lot of the, the chocolate vanilla. We had all, so many, there's so many fun things to do, just to start any class, quite frankly. I mean, if you have a math class and there's a test and everyone's nervous, get up and do the chocolate vanilla. Or would you, have you ever, where you have someone in the middle and they read like, climb the mountain? And if you have, you get up and switch chairs. And so many fun games like that. So I love it. Middle school's like a total time that this is necessary.
Yeah, I have a question. Have you noticed, like, I've got a middle schooler right now. I've got one right in the middle and one that's going to be there next year. Are you, as you're implementing this, I'm sure there can be like a little bit of resistance from students? Are you finding that, like, in my own dealings with trying to bring groups of adults together, there's always that like, I don't want to do this. This is unnecessary. But eventually, people soften over time. Are you find, are you having a similar experience? And if you do have that natural resistance from kiddos that are just too cool for the process, how are you sort of like quietly bringing them in? What kind of tactics do you use?
So that's a great question.
For inquiring minds, you know?
We've been lucky in our advisory, and we have yet to have a student pass. So in a circle, you are allowed to pass. You are allowed to say, I'm passing this round, which we want to offer because if it's forced, we will get more resistance. We've not encountered that yet. And what I will say is that sixth graders are an easier bunch to introduce this to. It gets much harder in seventh and eighth grade.
Yeah.
And I've done them in, in, in eighth grade, and it takes a longer time. That being said, when I started this two years ago in my advisory, which was the sixth grade advisory, there was more resistance in that particular advisory. And you just have to persevere and let them pass and let them sit in the circle and hear their peers. And eventually, they come around and they join as they see everyone else is doing it, and it's okay. I think a lot of the resistance is this is strange and unusual, and I'm not sure if it's cool yet. I'm not sure if I'm safe sharing this stuff.
That's a joke, yeah.
And sometimes they just don't even have the context of like, why are you asking me this question? No one else has ever asked me this question. So it, what I always say when we do professional development with my peers is like hang in there because it can be really uncomfortable and it can be really painful at first. But you just please push through because it's so worth it. And sometimes, I mean, that, in that particular advisory, it took a couple of months before everybody was sharing. We've just been really lucky.
Yeah, I think we didn't start out with those questions. We started out with very fun. We actually let students take the lead, pick a question, come up with a question. These, you know, we didn't, we've only been doing these questions for a couple of weeks. Like, we really eased into it. And maybe Jess said this, and I wasn't paying attention, but I don't remember there even being a conversation about that you can pass. So I, we haven't had anyone pass yet, but maybe we have told them that. I don't remember that.
We do get, we do get an "I don't know" sometimes, and that's fine. They might not know.
And what we've told the kids, we, we told Miles, too. We said, like, these are the, you're going to see these questions a lot now. So like I said, like, start thinking about them. And maybe we post them in the room. Maybe, you know, maybe all the teachers have a poster or something. Where it's, you know, just start thinking about. Or it's like just something, especially sixth graders, a lot of these kids don't know each other, right? They're coming in.
Yeah.
And we did this from day one, like day one. And this is our first year working together as well. So like literally, day one, Jess was like, circle up, and I'm like, huh? Like, so we did, we circle up and I think our, our circle's too big right now, but we have to, you know, we're strategic in where we place kids, like we never stand next to each other because one of us is always, you know, you learn.
We should have a law.
Certain peers shouldn't be next to each other, but, and there's a, you know, there's a lot of like copying, you know, the person before you, but at least they're speaking, at least they're, I mean, we have some very outgoing students and some that aren't so much and everybody participates, so.
They're speaking and they're listening, so they're, they're practicing, like I'm giving you my full attention.
Yes.
That is the, that is actually the harder part for our advisory is I'm giving you my full attention, but everyone is trying. I will say, two years ago, the, the hard customers were the ones who probably needed the connection the most. So we, you know, you just hang in there with them and the highlight at the end of that year was one of the students had a really tough situation where she had been wrongly accused of something and she knew that she hadn't done it, but previous choices had, had flagged her as somebody who could have, and she was really upset about being wrongly accused, but she found my co-advisor and myself throughout the day and was like, I'm so upset. So we were her, this is hard, I'm gonna go talk to these people.
Yeah. I was like, it's working. I was gonna say, it's a testament to your skillset as educators that you have the persistence to keep just modeling and waiting for them to come around, like, so tip of the hat to you both for making this program work. Jess?
I may be preaching to the choir, sure I am, so for anybody listening in, when I think about the skills and competencies our future workforce needs, this is probably more important than technology, AI, any of that. And this past, last month, I had to put together seminars on radical candor, I put together other seminars on how people can work together. Imagine the amount of money and time organizations could save in the future if we have a workforce that knows how to work together efficiently, effectively, especially as our workforce is thinning out. So thank you for starting this and as someone who may hire these kids one day, thank you.
Yes.
So for the persnickety ones that want data, 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 I know most of the data on how this works is what you experienced in the hall with this girl reaching out for you. So much of how we know it's working is just in our own reality. Is there a goal or a hope that maybe overall detentions will decrease or overall altercations in the lunchroom will go down, like?
That is, that is definitely the hope and the goal. And I think I always misquote it as Summersworth, Summersworth who's doing it, but I think Exeter School District has been a restorative, yeah. And I've attended professional development where I've just been with their principal and they've seen immense success across all of their schools. They're just fully immersed in it. And so they've had a lot of success. I think Jay and Sean probably could speak more to how we're gonna track that, but that is the hope, that overall we see a decrease.
The other tracking issue is, I can't stand third grade testing, oh, last year we were better. Well, it was different third graders, you know, like, so you take like the sixth grade that doesn't know middle school any different than, this is how we manage our emotions and our behaviors at middle school. So you, you compare that, those grades against prior, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
And against like six, seven, eight, you compare against themselves. And then at the end of three years, you can totally look at all of it and say, okay, this is really working. Or it's working well here, not so much here, like, yeah.
I, I just wanna say that is an area that this.
I, I would add that that's an area that we can help with the Project Aware Grant, which has, the Project Aware Grant has been supportive of purchasing items that are the middle and high school can use, so we've invested a lot in this. And this is absolutely the best implementation plan is to always use people from within who are passionate and can speak to their colleagues and as peers. With the data part, that's another whole level and that is something that our SEL implementation specialist who's, you know, from the grant, who's here just for the grant to build capacity could probably help you with, is understanding what that data would look like and she can probably set that up to help you guys, so.
I'm not insisting we have it right away, but it's just fun to think about.
I think it's important, actually. It also builds momentum for how it, it does help.
And it'll be, it'll be really important because this sixth grade will be our first, like, class that will make it, they're starting out the gate with this and this model.
Right.
And so by the time they reach eighth grade, it'll just be ingrained as this is what we as RMS, as a community, this is how we respond, this is how we talk, this is how we.
Does every teacher do advisory?
Yes.
Everybody in the building, not just the teachers.
Oh, great, so, so it would make sense if everyone gets trained in this.
Yes, yes. And like I said, about two-thirds have had circles training.
Yeah.
And we hope to like close the gap and do the last third, I think, or next PD day. And then one-third has had like more in-depth training with the questions.
Yeah. Nice.
So I just wanted to share that and give kudos to the high school because for three years, four years now?
Three years, yeah.
Three years that they have been on the journey for restorative practices and the goal was always to bring this to the middle school so that we have common language, common practices, and that we're doing, we're not going to punitive measures as the first line of interactions with students. So, and Tim can speak more to this, but I just wanted to acknowledge that it was a purposeful and intentional to bring this down to Runlet.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, and I would add that the elementary schools have been now coming online with asking more about it, wanting to get in line with the restorative work that is being done throughout the district. And I applaud what you guys are doing. When it comes to the circle and community building, I know there's some people who would say, well, this is just not my thing, but what you are building is empathy and understanding of others. And that is the foundation for when good things go wrong, the fixing work that has to happen in the restorative circles for problem solving. And I would also add, with the reluctant participants, experience that I've had that's worked well at the high school is what I call mini-circles, finding an opportunity with individuals reluctant to engage, having a little bit of my one-on-one circle conversation with them. And it's amazing how quickly it brings them along, even in some of the roughest situations. And it's, it's great to hear that people are already coming to you or students are coming to you when they feel wronged and they've seen you as a trusted person, they understand that you have a lens where you're looking at, at the whole experience and you're willing to listen and, and you've, what you've developed is agency in that child because they know their voice is being heard. And that's, that's the whole, you know, foundation of restorative practices. It's difficult to get that, you know, community circles across the building done and up and running, but when it's working, the rest of it will just fall into place. That is the foundation, the universal intervention. And for data points, you can use discipline, you can use the, that as a data point, attendance, are students coming? Are they showing up to class? Are they, are they showing up for your advisory is a great data point because they show up for what they see of value. And your MTS systems of supports, what types of referrals are you seeing compared to what types of referrals were you seeing over time? And qualitative data is always a great thing, getting some student testimonies, how has this impacted you? And, and going the full barrage from the student who's meeting with Mr. White to the student who's, you know, gearing up for taking an AP class in their freshman year at the high school, you know? Get the full gamut and through that you'll get some very good data that will show similar experiences of what Exeter's reporting out. Would, I give kudos to you, although Exeter's in it, they started elementary and are bubbling up to middle, you're, we are going in the reverse direction. And in my conversations with them, they have little data at the middle school and no data at the high school, so we're ahead of them in that, so, great job, guys.
Thank you.
And we're building up for, or gearing up for student-led conferences that start next Thursday.
I will be there.
But I feel like the students, especially those more reluctant students are already, I, I can see it, like we're building their confidence that it's okay to speak out loud and it's okay to share and, yes, it's with their families, but still like, and we, all of our advisories are buddy, there's two adults in every advisory, so it is really nice, like Jess is maybe a little more warm and fuzzy than I am, so she's, it's, well, you know what I'm saying. But I, Jess wasn't there one day and I.
Good backup, I get it.
No, but I led a circle one day when she wasn't there. I was like, sometimes you just have to rip the Band-Aid off and we, I had lunch, I eat lunch with a group of teachers every day and I heard them go, hey, that circle thing was kinda cool this morning. Like they're all trying it, it's just, you know, we all have a comfort zone and I, I feel like I just jumped right in, but everyone, you know, it, it depends on, on who you're with, but I feel like whoever did the partnering up for advisories, who, Admin, thank you because I feel like it's a nice.
Good balance.
A good balance of, of different personalities, so that's good.
And I would say the faculty has been great, they've been really like open to it and have taken it like above and beyond. We have one teacher who was like, I'm gonna do sentence stems for kids who are having a hard time thinking of their responses.
Amazing.
And we have a student in that advisory who is a selective mute and they rehearse, like Mr. Herbert said, they're, they're rehearsing their one-on-one first and then they can participate and they do.
That's great.
Yes.
So finally, Mr. White, would you like to share your journey that you're headed to, on? Your graduate, yeah?
Oh, yeah, so following the high school's lead and learning from some workshops at some of the high school, I've done the past couple of years on PD days. And all we, and for some time, having a curiosity and interest in this, I'm just, I'm now starting into the, these resources and the work is from, a lot of it's informed by one institution is the International Institute on Restorative Practices and they provide a graduate certificate in RP. So not a, you know, I have a CAGS, I already have my masters, but it's for graduate courses, you know, focused on that. So Jess actually is, that, that's where she did some of her thesis master's work was with their courses and it's similar and akin to what you had done, Dr. Herbert, with Leslie University and their program, so.
Where are you doing this?
It's called the International Institute for Restorative Practices.
Oh, right, right, right.
They're out of Pennsylvania, but it's all online, so.
Actually, I have a good friend, Whitney. Whitney Hoarth is very involved in restorative practices at the collegiate level, travels all over the country.
Oh, excellent.
And I love reading her social media because I learn something new every day.
Yeah, right on.
Very happy for you. That's super exciting.
Yeah, and for whatever it's worth, maybe just to add real quick to, you know, we don't necessarily have data ready right now, but I can say with two-thirds apples to oranges from last year, we're definitely down out of school suspensions right now. We're really, we've really been shifting to focus on intent, impact and frequency of harmful behavior. And our, our assistants that work in our, our response rooms, you know, what we used to call ISS, it still is ISS sometimes, but we're really trying to tailor responses to impactful behavior to that actual incident. The impact, the intent, the, the harm that was caused and, you know, supporting and training those staff in that work and having students assigned appropriate time and space to be able to do that in relation to what the, what the behavior was and what the impact was that it had. And then bringing students together with teachers that were impacted in those relationships or other students who are harmed by their behavior, bringing them together for what have been some really powerful, meaningful restorative conferences where, where the, the healing is done, where the, you know, one of the questions about this work is always about accountability. And sometimes people wanna see three-day suspension as accountability.
Right.
But, you know, we know from so many years of research that time alone doesn't work, but the time and space with the processing is what works, so.
Yeah.
We really try to tailor it to, and it sometimes is informed by how long it takes the child to get there, to be able to return to whatever space or relationship was impacted. So, you know, we have work to do still in training and learning, but it's, it's really, it's, you know, it's, it's powerful and it's, it's, yeah, it's very special work, it's.
Well, and we'll see a dip in repetitive, repeated offenses because you're, it's bringing people, them back into the, like, both sides are coming back to the community, not just the person who has been harmed, but the person whose behavior caused the situation is also gonna be welcomed back at the end of repairing the harm, which is so different from traditional discipline. And that's what's so important because often they're feeling like, well, I don't really belong to this community anymore, so why would I be invested? But this gives them an opportunity to come back, you're part, you're still part of our community.
Fascinating.
And it's never forced or contrived. It's always parents of those that are harmed and the, the person harmed has a direct say and voice. And if they, they're not interested or they're not ready to, we don't bring them together. Sometimes it's just to bring together to replace that last poor interaction with something more healthy to move forward with, you know? Agree to be wherever we are, but move on. So it, yeah, it's, it's good work, it's some of our, that our staff are doing with this.
Yeah. This reminds me a lot of, there's this book called The Answers Are There and it's about the reparation of the Civil War in Sierra Leone. And this is how they did it in family talk or Famble Talk, where it was bonfires and circles within communities where, you know, they had really hard conversations and it did amazing things for the people involved. Like this is just, it's scientifically backed, it's going to better our community. Thank you all very much for this really difficult work that takes a lot of courage to do. So we're really grateful for you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. You don't have to stay for the rest of this. I'm sure you don't want to.
Thank you.
We are the best committee though, so.
I mean, when?
We are.
Just a bunch of baddies doing our thing. Thank you all so much. We'll give you a second to clear out before we move on to the next. Don't feel rushed, don't feel rushed.
Can we send that quote?
Thank you.
The baddies.
Oh my gosh, we're just baddies like doing schoolwork.
I mean.
This just in, it's all a bunch of baddies.
Thank you. It's so good to see you guys.
I actually saw her in the hall.
She will be thrilled to know that you mentioned her. She holds you in such high regard, I hope you know that. She really loves you.
I want you to report to all my kids' friends now. Okay? I want you to report to all my kids' friends now.
Do it.
Have a great night, y'all.
Say hi to Craigus, Jess.
I love that age.
It's so fun, yeah.
Take your special kind of human to enjoy middle school.
To teach middle school, that's for sure. All right, so please don't feel like you gotta rush out of here because we're gonna move on to the next piece, but let's talk about the AdHoc Special Education Subcommittee.
So after we met and dug into looking for this program evaluation plan that came out of a committee that Mr. Fabrizio put together to look at the state of the state with the Concord School District Special Ed Plans, what we have as a product of that was a continuous improvement plan for the Concord School District Special Ed programs. So within that program, they, they identify four pillars and caveat to this or side note is Jenny Mosca was also a member of the visiting committee that looked at our program evaluation. So she's very well familiar with this document.
Well-versed, yeah, that's brilliant.
So, so what a great person to have. We really hit the jackpot with locking that one in.
Yeah.
So there's four pillars in there and what we have done is right now we started setting up our initial team. Barb has agreed to take part in it. It's Jenny, Nancy Coffin, Michelle Speckman, Jay Richard and myself to start. And we're dividing the four pillars up from elementary to middle high. Middle and high will work together, elementary will work with Jenny and Nancy. And they will identify individuals in each school to bring, bring on. It should not be a heavy lift because it's pretty detailed when you get into it, what So there's four pillars in there and what we have done is right now, we started setting up our initial team. Barb has agreed to take part in it. It's Jenny, Nancy Coffin, Michelle Speckman, Jay Richard and myself to start. And we're dividing the four pillars up from elementary to middle, high. Middle and high will work together, elementary will work with Jenny and Nancy. And they will identify individuals in each school to bring, bring on. It should not be a heavy lift because it's pretty detailed when you get into it, what the, the recommendations are, actionable steps towards those recommendations and data we can collect along the way to see where we're at. So there's some of these things, as we were meeting as a group, people were nodding, saying, this is in play, this has been in play for at least a year and a half now. So, so there's some of the stuff we're going to report out, it's in progress. Some of the stuff we're going to come with a, you know, next steps, how we can move towards this and give a summary report to the board. Our goal is to get together as a committee between December, January, gather their information potentially, January, February, maybe preferably February, I believe, of the committee to present to the board about the findings. Be back with this committee in January.
Amazing. Thank you.
No problem.
This is, this eases my heart a bit because with all the changes coming in funding and how the government thinks they can fix us.
Tell me about it.
We need to have a good handle on how we're managing now. And another piece of advice that was given to me by like a, sort of an entrepreneurial coach, but looking at, you have a plan and it falls apart and that every good plan has a plan B, where you go in assuming plan A could most definitely fail. And when I think of special ed funding and the things that we rely on the money for, always looking at what we're doing and all the ways that that can occur, regardless of what happens to us financially, if that makes sense. So this is like half the work is done.
Yeah, for sure. Is there anything that the board can do to be supportive moving forward?
And when we, we do the, I guess, a document study is a better, is a correct term for it. When we've done a document study and looked at the state of the state, where we are and, and, you know, where we have to go, we'll come back to the board. When we report out, that time I think we can identify any resources to support, we're going to need to continue the work towards actionable items.
Awesome. That sounds great. Any questions from you, Jess? Any questions, Barb?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much for bringing this to us. You know, tip of the hat to Lucas Gallup for spurring us on in this. I was really grateful for that little nudge that got it back on our, back to our attention, so thank you very much if you're watching. I think that's it for this evening. Anything else, Kim, that we maybe need to add?
I think we're pretty good. As a preview, at our next instructional committee, we're going to be sharing EduClima and our source for how it is that we collect data and monitor student progress so that you're not just seeing the end results, the SAS scores, the SAT scores, but you're seeing the process that leads up to.
How the sausage is made.
Yeah, and how we respond to interventions and respond to students' needs. So we just want to share that platform. The last time we brought it to you was my first year, so three years ago, we had purchased it and we told you what it was, but now we've got it to the point where we can explain how it is.
Awesome.
Right.
Congratulations. That's a big learning curve.
And, yes.
That's awesome. I'm looking forward to it.
So that's it. Thank you.
All right, that being said, I just need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Excellent. All those in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
All those against, abstained? All right, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.